This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing with a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather today. Father, we thank you for the folks that are in attendance today. Father, we thank those that have been called on to make very difficult and very important decisions, Father, and we ask that you would bless us with the spirit of civility, Father, bless us with the spirit of compassion, Father, and bless us with the stewardship that we need to be good stewards over the resources of the city. Father, we ask that you would continue to bless this great city and continue to bless its citizens, Father, for it's in Jesus' name that we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why you go?
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education and Recreation Committee meetings, work session, and council meeting on August 16th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August 12th through the 18th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor's not here.
Yeah, but then tonight?
You don't have any unfinished business or resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1410 Fillmore Avenue in District 5. This resolution was tabled for seven days on August 16th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
May as a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 631 Turntine Street in District 5. This resolution was tabled for seven days on August 16th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1007 South 11th Street in District 5. Last known owners are the State of Alabama and First Family Financial Services Incorporated. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Horbison with the Builder Department. We started this case in June of 2008. There've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that I was at the fair committee meeting of the Alabama League this past Friday, and there were a number of municipalities who were having the same problem we're having with state-owned property and within our city limits. And we've requested that the league look into possibly getting some type of legislation passed to help us in that area, because these properties are there, and if the city forecloses on them, then we've got to deal with the state to back taxes, and everybody's losing. The city is losing, the state is losing, because these properties are sitting there and no taxes are being collected. So hopefully, in this next legislative session, we're going to try to get something moving towards situations where if the state owns the property for back taxes, that they can turn it over to the municipalities, and of course, then we can in turn develop it, get it back on the tax road some kind of way.
Okay. Our next public hearing is-
We're going to vote. We've got to vote.
Vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 414 Van Cortlandt Street in District 6. The last known owner is Timothy D. Sprayberry. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started our proceedings in November of 2010. There've been no improvements to this property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 406 Webster Street in District 6. The last known owner is Nadine Humphries in care of Anita Bradley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of this year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution authorizing abatement agreement with AT&amp;T Advertising Solutions. This is for yellow and white page ads for Nakalouka Falls Campground for 2012. The amount is $58 a month. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution authorizing community policing agreement. This continues the agreement with the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority through September of 2012 for five officers at the rate of 1692 per hour. This is reimbursed to the city. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is probably one of the most successful programs we've ever got involved in. We've turned around some of our public housing from a place that wasn't desirable to live to some really nice neighborhoods, so I'm tickled to death that this is going on.
And I would reiterate what Bob just said, too. We are reimbursed by the Gadsden Housing Authority on this, so that's a two-fold plus.
Who, by the way, gets this money from the federal government, who, by the way, is talking about cutting it out.
I knew there was a negative there somewhere.
Well, I just wanted to bring you down to reality.
I'm positive we're going to pass this. How about that?
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution authorizing addendum to contract with Gadsden State Community College. This specifies that GSCC will comply with the federal guidelines concerning drug and alcohol programs for driver's qualifications. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that on this right here, that those drivers that are do have CDL license or passenger endorsements and air brakes, and I think that what we've read today said that, and also, too, if they do the drug testing like they're supposed to, that's real important when you've got CDL license. That's all I got.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution electing to increase employee contributions to RSA. The state legislature authorized employers participating in the employees' retirement system of Alabama to elect whether or not to increase the employee deductions from 5% to 7.25 and 6% to 8.25 effective October 1, 2011, with an additional 0.25% effective October 1, 2012. The city's rate is currently 24.54%. The legislature eliminated the deferred retirement option plan, a drop, which will reduce the rate to 22.69. Increasing the deductions from employees will reduce the employer rate to 20.91 in 2012. Once adopted, this action cannot be revoked. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to say that notwithstanding the police and the fire department, this is going to include every other employee with the City of Gadsden, Alabama, who had no part in that increase to start with. I think we pretty well hashed it out upstairs, downstairs, down here, and everywhere else, but I just wanted that said for, I'm going to make a no vote on this simply because I think it should be that the employees are hurt.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, like you said, we've hashed this, and I don't know what else we can do as far as discussions, but again, I'm one of the ones who wish we could do something else, but being realistic about the situation as to what's happening around us today, not only here in the City of Gadsden, the State of Alabama, but around this country, we've got to do something. And we're paying 70, in the high, well, the middle 70s, since they questioned as to whether or not the 74.3 is correct or not. We're paying towards salaries and benefits. If we're paying 70%, we're still too high based on what we need to be paying to operate a business or this city. You've got some cities who pay 40-some percent, 50-some percent, and so 70% or 74% or 75% is way too high, and we've got to do something to reduce the cost. If we don't, we're going to wind up like a number of other governmental entities and a number of other businesses, we're going to be out of business. Employees won't be able to draw down the road and stuff like that, so hopefully, this is just, I think one of the gentlemen said yesterday, this is a drop in the bucket, but we're hoping over the next six months or so that we can put enough drops in the bucket that we can fill the bucket up and hopefully stop some of the bleeding and stop, reduce that 70-some percent contribution rate.
Mr. President.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to say that, you know, we've discussed this quite extensively on yesterday and this morning and pre-council, and I can assure you that this council takes no honor in having to pass this measure. We know the necessity of it. That's why we are doing, taking the actions that we're taking. It is an important thing that we do, that 74% of your income going to payroll and benefits will sink you, no company, no city, nothing can survive with that ratio, where you've only got 25 cents to go and do everything else that the city has to do out of every dollar. We don't take any pleasure in this, we assure you of that. We don't have, we're not proud of that, but we know that we have to make a stand, take a stand, and make a move, and that's why we're doing this. The representation that I've heard in the past two days, three days, four days, or the past week to 10 days, the comments I have heard have come from two organizations, and I have not heard the city at large make any comments, so I don't know if the comments that I'm hearing represents all the city employees or just a portion of them. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, I guess I'm the one that was getting it from all the other employees, which is no problem, but, and I wasn't going to say this, there's a lot of federal politics been played in this thing and so on and so forth, so what I'm looking forward to, our problem came along because of dropped revenue. Is that all right?
Of what?
Dropped revenue. Our revenue went down. We're not getting the revenue that we need to pay all these things.
I wouldn't think that's-
You wouldn't think so, yes? Our income doesn't come into focus.
It comes into focus, but that's not, that's not the reason we're here.
It brought it, to balance the budget, but to balance our budget, we had to have the necessary money to balance it with, which means our revenues aren't there to balance it and do the things we want to do.
That's not a true statement, either.
But, that's what I feel about it.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Okay, your opinion, I'm sorry.
Well, sure. After Labor Day, we've got no problem anyway, because President Obama is going to come out with his plan, and everybody's going to go back to work, and everything's going to be fine, so I'm not worried past that point.
That's the-
But I'll stand up for the employees who aren't in the fire and the police, they haven't had a voice in this, but I put it in there today, okay?
Well, the bottom line being is we're paying too big a percentage of our budget for personnel.
I know that, Bill.
It's not fair, it's not fair to the citizen out there to shortchange them on the things that we should be doing in the city, and we can't do it on 25% of the budget. It's just out of proportion, it's a hard decision to make, but it's a right decision, and I'm on a vote for it.
And now we've cut 2.5% of the people out there in business. We cut that because they don't have the money to spend out there. And you can argue this point forever and ever and ever, and get down the net, so let's just get on with it.
I agree with you, that's what we're cutting, but I'd rather do that and cut the entire salary out, and they ain't got no money to spend in the community. And that's what's happening in a lot of places. If you don't believe it, ask the folks who worked at the steel plant.
I'll go with layoffs as it was suggested that we do yesterday by a party.
Nah.
And I do, you know, Mr. President, I wasn't going to add to this, and I apologize for doing just what I promised not to, but, you know, again, 74.3%, very irresponsible, whether you're talking about a public entity or a private entity, very irresponsible when you start talking about personnel costs being at that level. The plan going forward, and I think what's happened in the past, is that this administration has, and I think it was even said by those who are opponents of this resolution, that this administration's been fairly fiscally responsible and fiscally conservative, and that's a true statement. That's why we do have money in the bank, but I think what they've done in the past and what they'll do going forward, and what this council will do going forward, is this is the first baby step towards us taking a number of baby steps to eliminate some of our personnel costs and get down to a reasonable level. The mean, or the average level for personnel costs amongst cities is right at about 55.5%. So we are almost 20% north of the average. Folks, that's scary. I don't care who you are, and I don't care how you look at this, that's very, very scary, and it's at some level irresponsible. It would be very politically expedient for me to stand up here and grandstand about how I'm for people, which I am, and for not adding, taking away from their checks, which I'm really not, but at the end of the day, that wouldn't be the most fiscally responsible thing for me to say. So it's very difficult to have to go look at people that you like and you really support and say, "We had to make a tough decision." But I wasn't elected to be popular, I was elected to make good, sound decisions, and again, I think this is a sound decision from the standpoint of the council, and you'll see many more sound decisions to come. We've got to get that number down.
In 1992, we passed a ordinance or a resolution that would have started, the biggest thing in it was that when you, when you went on social security and that you went on Medicare and the insurance went out the door then. We got sued by the fire department, we went to Birmingham to federal court, judge says that we were being fair with the people, with all the people. The next year, the council just ignored that and went ahead and absorbed all the insurance increase and everything else, and we've been doing that ever since. This is the first time, in my opinion, that this, that the council has been fiscally responsible, and all those other years, and every time they voted it down was irresponsible, and they've gotten us into a situation where we have $103 million of benefits that have to be paid in the future, and it's making a difference in whether we can borrow money and so forth. Anyway, I applaud the council for, I think, what their action is going to be.
Mr. President, I wasn't going to say this, I said it yesterday, and I'm going to try to sum it up just as quick as I can, so we won't have to hash all this out again, but the 2.25% that every city employee will be paying, that belongs to the state retirement, that belongs to the state retirement, will be going into an account where you'll be able to retire when you get old enough to retire. If you deem not to stay with the city of Gadsden when you're old enough to retire, the money you put in your account is yours. If you retire from the city of Gadsden, everybody's right, the extra money you pay towards your retirement, your retirement will not increase. If you stay and deem to retire from the city after 25 years and say you're 60 years old, they take so much out of the money that you've put into that account every month going towards your retirement. If you don't live 10 years, because I'm on state retirement, and I've got a thing that shows this, every month they take so much out of the money I put into my retirement to pay your retirement check. If you die within 10 years of putting that money in there, your beneficiary gets the rest of the money that's in your account, you don't lose it. So it's basically, the way I see it, I mean, they're paying 2.25% more, but if they quit, or after they retire, if they don't live 10 years long enough to draw their money out, their beneficiary will get that extra percent. I mean, that's in writing, you can call the State of Alabama, you can check with anybody you want to, I've got letters that says that when I retired.
So if they stay longer than 10 years, then they've drawn all their, what they've put in out?
If you stay longer than 10 years, you've drawn all the money out that you've put in, and you're on somebody else's money.
I thought I was correct yesterday. Thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution amending employee handbook to reflect elimination of the deferred retirement option program. The state legislature took action to end the drop program, the city has no option, and this revises the employee handbooks to comply with state law. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is another one of those arbitros that was placed around municipalities and other governmental entities, and they're finally realizing that, so we're going to visit this particular program in the future.
We didn't have to put that in, Roger.
But I'm just saying, though, we had to match, did we not?
Well, we wanted to put it in.
What was the cost to it?
$90,000 the first year, I remember that.
So we did, so it did cost the city some money?
Sure it did.
Oh, okay. Well, again, that was one of those mandates without any compensation. We had, it cost us, okay. I just want to be sure we had to pay something.
Unfunded.
Unfunded mandate, okay, all right.
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses or any new business?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. President. Okay. It's from the legal department, number 2011/313. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3176 to McCord Communications for the Cyrene Parts for the outdoor warning system for the Gadsden Edgewall EMA. That's another one.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask you, clerk, take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items here to bring up under new business. I have a resolution appointing a new member to the Water Works and Sewer Board, I ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, this is a vacancy that's being, that's being created by one of our councilman chicken, I mean, resigning from the board, and his vacancy will be filled by the appointment of Mr. Ricky Hunter, a resident of District 6.
And who was that chicken? I didn't hear his name. I think that councilman has his plate really full at the present time, and I think that's why he thought that it felt like there was probably another person could do just a better job or as good a job as he was doing at the present time.
You're right, Derek, there are other reasons.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I also have one other item. This is a resolution authorizing agreement for the subordination of mortgage, ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I just hope we're just not setting this up for people coming on and this happening more and more.
Mm-hmm.
I think somebody should have seen this a little earlier and given some good qualified advice to the lady, I really do.
Yeah, I don't disagree with Councilman Reed, this is a scary scenario for the property owner, but this involves a subordination agreement against an existing mortgage, and if, as I understand it, this loan is not to be paid back if the owner lives in the home for five years. Five years, so, you know, again, we appeal to the owner to be responsible with this new credit.
The consolidation of a loan plus the house payment, and I do worry about that.
Well, again, you've got to look at the times. Well, again, you got to look at the times.
I understand that. You got to feel for them in case this.
Yeah, if the times were good, you know, then I could understand, but, you know, people are trying to, to make it, people are trying to make it nowadays, and they're doing everything they can to, to make it. So I agree.
It's going to get worse.
Yeah, it will.
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have eight documents. A resolution authorizing grant application for tourism legislation grant program for a grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to allow upgrades to Naklelil Falls and market, and to mark the smoke on the falls. I would like to introduce that for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other?
Mr. President, I have several here, and I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to consider all, and then we'll deal with them individually. The first one is approving a special events license for the fish market. The second one is issuing of the general obligation warrants, and the third is to settle a lawsuit. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider all three.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the two resolutions and one ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Okay, the first one is a resolution three-ten, approve and special event retail license for the fish market for their second annual fish fry, beginning Saturday, August the twenty-seventh at six a.m. and ending on the twenty-seventh at eleven fifty-nine p.m. Put that in motion.
Yeah, here's second.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the second one is an ordinance and is dealing with authorization of the general obligation warrants. I'd put this in the form of a motion.
Second.
Well, probably discuss it pretty quick.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, what we're doing is this is the money that we had borrowed short term to do several projects. The road out at the airport was one and.
Technical school there.
And building the new tech school on the campus of Gadsden City High School was the other. But we're turning this into now a long-term note. And let me just make a notation here. When we sent this out to bid, we sent it out to, I think she, I forgot how many banks she said, six, seven or eight banks, and we only got one taker. So that goes to show you, three months ago, every bank in town and every bank around the state was calling me and the city trying to do business with us. And then a few weeks ago, when we sent this out, nobody wanted to talk to us. So that ought to tell you something. But anyway, that's it. Call for the vote.
Move.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the last one is authorize and approve of a final settlement of a lawsuit. This becomes public record now so I can name the individual. This is to settle the lawsuit with Chief Crouch, and so I'd ask for passage of this.
Second.
I want to get in on it. I've been in on it for ten years.
Okay. Are we ready for discussion?
No.
To consider.
Is that a second?
Yeah, yeah, second.
We're going to consider.
Go right ahead.
You say you're ready for discussion, Ben, if you want to discuss.
They're enthusiastic thinking I'm ahead.
I have talked for ten years on this. I think I've said enough.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, this will bring closure to a, to a topic or an incident, incidents that have been plaguing the city for quite some time.
Shows, Mr. President and the council, it shows, and people here, it shows the negative impact of protracted litigation and what, what that does to our finances, what it does to the overall morale and mood at the city, at the city level. This is not a good thing.
I was told, don't say anything unless you can say something good. Good.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department of Courts, Committee of Lords, are there any? Remarks by the mayor and the council? Ben, you want to start?
I'll start. I'm going south tomorrow, and I'm going to enjoy myself, and I'll see you all Friday.
Where you going, Ben?
Being a good Baptist, I can't relinquish that information.
We have a task for you to perform while you're there now, okay?
Yes, I do. I'm going to exercise.
Okay.
And Sunday.
I think I've said enough for today, Mr. President.
We've had, you probably noticed in the paper today, if you read the Gadsden Times, that we've had a rash of car break-ins, especially in my section of town, the past few weeks, and we had, I think there's twenty-something break-ins over the weekend, some cars stolen. Just to emphasize, keep your vehicles locked. Most of these were unlocked. Cars that were stolen, keys left in the car. So please, and keep an eye on, for your neighbors. If you see something around the car, let's get this stopped. It's really getting out of hand of the break-ins we've had in the car. So be sure you don't leave any valuables in your car and keep your cars locked and keep an eye on your neighbors.
Bill, I want to thank you for bringing that up because it happened in my district also. I had a lot of break-ins burning in the west.
We're having a rash of it right now, but I feel confident the police will eventually catch them. They always do, and, but anyway, be aware of what's going on.
We get back to that. Neighbor, watch neighbor. That's what it amounts to. I appreciate you bringing that up.
I have my district meeting on Thursday, this coming Thursday, at the Carver Community Center at five o'clock. Please, ma'am, and please, sir, come out and finish listening and hearing what's going on. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Do want to reiterate the youth explosion that's going to be taking place in September, September seventeenth. We have here recently filmed some public service announcements that'll be airing here soon. There is a Facebook page that, that actually captures some of the details regarding the event, and there's, again, quite a bit of buzz. We've got a, a very respectful and interesting panel that's going to be talking about issues with our young people, and we likewise have a, have a lot of fun playing for them. So it's going to be a good event, and again, we'll also, we're calling on any nonprofit organization that would like for us to speak to some of your events. We can use this event as a catalyst to support some of the other events that are taking place in the city. So this is not a do-all, catch-all, it's more or less something to augment things that are already underway in the city. We had a community development committee meeting this morning regarding grass cutting, and do want to thank Andy, Powell and the Gadsden Times in advance for addressing that item. That's a, that's a, an issue that's of great concern for the folks in, in the city, and we do, I don't know that we fixed anything this morning, but we at least explained some things. So again, I do want to make sure that people pay close attention, and please reach out to us so that we can inform you. Don't draw conclusions based on limited information. Please reach out and allow us to inform, inform you in terms of how that process works. Very last thing is I do want to talk a little bit about just our financial situation and just hit on something that happened yesterday that just really concerns me now, concerned me yesterday and concerns me even more now. As we were engaging in the discussion on yesterday, and for the most part, you know, as heated as the discussion was, it remained civil. But at one point, towards the end of the discussion on yesterday, we had a, a member of our fire department who yells out, "Lay 'em off." Those were, and I'm, I'm not making that up. That's, that's a quote. I can assure you that nothing has been, nothing has, has been avoided more like the plague than the whole prospect of having to lay people off. If you look at our financial situation and where we are relative to personnel cost, most private companies would have knee, already knee-jerked to laying off people, and there'd already be people getting pink slips. But the city has made a very concerted effort to maintain jobs, even at the risk of getting way out of balance relative to personnel cost. I just, you know, I have never professed to be a union person, you know, you know, I've, I've grown up around a blue-crawler folks all of my life, but I, you know, I can tell you this, that it is very, very irresponsible. It lacks maturity for any individual, let alone a proposed union individual, to use the term, "lay 'em off." I think that, that ought to be included in their handbook and their training video for what not to say, because that's just, it makes no sense. And I can assure the citizens of the city and the folks that work for this city that we will make layoffs, reductions in force, whatever you want to call it, we'll make that a last resort. We will do our best to make that a last resort. That's not the way I want to balance our budget. That's not the way I want to address our, that's not the way I want to address our shortcomings relative to, to expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, to piggyback on what Councilman Williams just said, there isn't a company that exists today that would have ever allowed that personnel and benefit expenses to get to the point of seventy-four percent of their income. There's not one. If there was one that got to that point, you can rest assured that they went into decline and they probably no longer exist. The second thing is I'd like to also piggyback on what Bill and Ben said about the break-in. We've had a rash of break-ins in, in my area too, over in, in the East Gadsden area, and it was basically the same thing, where they found cars that were open, they went in and ransacked them, you know, found items that were gone, and it was, and they did a good job of it, several cars over in my area. So it just makes sense for us to secure our vehicles, you know, when they're outside. Even if you just jump out for a few minutes, you know, at the mall or somewhere, lock your car. Don't, don't leave your valuables unlocked or unprotected in your vehicle. And the last thing I'll say is the Sickle Cell Walkathon is still alive and well. It will occur on October the eighth at Moraine Park. I encourage everyone in the city of Gadsden, Edgewall County, to come in and participate in this event and let us show the other counties that are going to be represented in this, in this area, what the city of Gadsden can actually do. We're a proud city and we can perform well. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.